The commission Bisbee of Arizona to order November twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Roll call. Mike Ablyn is absent. Charles Dillinger.
Here.
Douglas Dunn here. Alicia Spiriti, no?
In two minutes, she'll be here.
Okay. Tim Foster. Sandy Housman is not here either.
She's excused.
Okay, Cooper Raphael.
Here.
Pete Skinner is our council liaison. Emmanuel Spirit or Stewart is our staff liaison.
And Sandy.
Got it. Thank you.
We'll start off, we'll call the public, and this is if anyone wants to speak on a subject other than the agenda items, you can speak at this point. If not, we'll move on to agenda item number one, which is review and discussion of application for the transfer of city property submitted by Stephen Sugarman under City Code Section two point six point nine. The requested property is a portion of a property located at twenty-one A Timby Avenue, Bisbee, Arizona, approximately three thousand one hundred and two point nine square feet, point zero seven acres. Staff, do you want to update us on this?
Sure thing. One second. Hello, Mr. Rup. We will be with you shortly. We're on item number two. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, great. We're just gonna go ahead and, sorry, for some reason, the camera's not working. Okay, so we're on number one. We'll be with you shortly, okay, Mr. Rup? Okay, so I just wanna, this is the actual Mr. Sugarman. So I can give you kind of a summary of what Mr. Sugarman would like. Mr. Sugarman purchased his home in two thousand and ten without a formal survey, assuming his property boundaries match the county appraisal maps. During the preport mineral soil remediation project, they discovered that his accessory structure and a portion of his home encroached onto adjacent city-owned vacant lot. Survey confirmed that the accessory structure lies entirely on the city of property, and the applicant seeks to purchase the affected area to correct the encroachment and align the legal boundary with existing conditions. The interappraisal dated April ninth, two thousand and twenty-five established an opinion of value of six thousand eight hundred dollars. So the property is a small parcel with no open space or trail. The transfer is consistent with city plans and policies. Suitability for development, the parcel's small size and location make it unsuitable for separate development under current zoning. Compatibility, the transfer formalizes existing residential use, maintaining the area's residential character, and improves property boundary accuracy. Burden of hardship, no negative impacts are anticipated. The transfer resolves an encroachment, reduces liability, and clarifies ownership. And then also pursuant to subsection E, since the parcel has historically been used in connection with the applicant's residence and has an appraised value of less than seven thousand dollars at six thousand eight hundred dollars, and there are no other adjacent property owner who has expressed an interest in the property, it can be recommended that the parcel be auctioned. The property is not marketable to the general public because no one other than the adjoining property owner can, within the zoning code of the city, lawfully utilize the property. That's basically what subsection E says. It fits that criteria. So that's the staff report.
You are the applicant?
I am the applicant, sir. Yes.
Identify yourself and make your statement.
Yes, my name is Stephen Sugarman. I am the applicant and the owner of the adjacent affected house that is currently encroaching on city land at nine B Timby. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here heard here tonight. I appreciate it. As Mr. Stewart indicated, we bought our property in two thousand and ten in a very derelict condition from a gentleman who had died in his home without a survey. We naturally assumed that the house and the accessory structures were on land that we were purchasing when we bought the house. We had owned another house in Bisbee at the time that we purchased this house, and in retrospect, maybe we shouldn't have naturally assumed that our house was on our own property because after all, it's in Bisbee. But that's what we did. So we went ahead. We bought the property. And as I said, it needed a lot of work, and so we took that on. We had an architect prepare some engineering drawings, which were required because we were doing some foundation work that involved a bit of concrete in the city. Jim Ward preferred that we have some, that we have an engineer involved. And the engineer prepared a package for us that we submitted in conjunction with their building permit application that was granted by the city. It was stamped, approved, granted by the city. That building permit application included the shed, which we have, which is a separate structure, as part of the property. And up until through that time, there was no indication to us whatsoever that we were not on our own property. We developed the shed by putting in a laundry room and a hydronic heating system and a water heater and other sort of utility stuff. And as Mr. Stewart said, and all hunky-dory, that was fine. The sort of lightning hit us when I was at the house one day, just sort of tinkering around outside, and the Bisbee Soil Program guy came up and he said, I'm here to look at the remediation. And that was sort of surprising to me because I didn't feel like we had been contacted for our house yet. But he told me, well, no, I'm not here for your house. I'm here for the city property. And then he indicated this piece of land that the city owned. So that's when we first found out about the fact that we had an encroachment. We, at the time that we got around to rectifying the encroachment, I spoke with Mr. Stewart a couple of times, and he told me that we would be required to have a survey done. We had the survey done. What we learned in the survey that we hadn't known before was that the situation was a little worse than we had expected, that actually part of the house was encroaching onto the city land as well, a sliver of it. That was a surprise to us, frankly. So I'm here tonight in support of our application to rectify the situation and get the land underneath our structure so that everything makes sense to us. The particular piece of land, the city land, is a portion of a larger city lot, which is sort of octopus-shaped. This is just one small portion of it. And the, I say it's octopus-shaped, and that's a good analogy because it's like the head, the main portion of the lot is a public parking area that is down on an offshoot at the very end of High Road. There's a little street that I'm not even sure if it appears on the maps called Kelleher Avenue, very end of High Road. If you go down a very steep, rough road, there's a city parcel there that holds about six cars on a good day. If the cars are narrow and everybody parks carefully. That's, of course, it's city lots, parking, so anybody could park there that wanted to, but it's so remote and isolated there that it's just us, the people who are the immediate property owners, who are there. And that's always been a situation that's been really amicable, and we've always cooperated in making sure that there's parking for everybody who needs it and wants it. And this application doesn't affect that, the parking area, at all, the area that is actually being used by people. This area is like down a slope on a different level, on a different terrace, the one that I've applied for. And it's sort of an orphan, like an octopus tentacle, if you will, that sort of sits alone by itself off to the side. And it's, as Mr. Stewart said, around three thousand one hundred square feet. And our concern, our reason for wanting to purchase it is to take care of the encumbrances that I've spoken about, but also because the lot has become, well, I don't want to say it's abandoned because it's city property, and I don't want to say something that might have some sort of legal connotation. And certainly, the city has never abandoned it in the legal sense, but the land is sort of an orphaned piece of land that hasn't received any city attention for who knows how long. I absolutely couldn't say. But what's happening there is there's a lot of giant reed that's gotten established there, and it's spreading, and, you know, I've made various attempts, and I will continue to make attempts, to take out the dead stuff when I can, the dry stuff, and truck it away because I am concerned about the fire hazard there, which is large and getting greater every day as this giant reed just continues to spread. Now knowing that it's city land, nonetheless, I'll let you know because I care about the house and I'm very aware of what the fire danger is. We've been really trying to, we've been watering the trees that are on the land. There are a couple of good trees. There are some volunteer pomegranate trees and an alder and something else that I can't identify. And we've been trying to stay on the giant reed as much as we can, but we'd really like to sort of take ownership of that parcel so that we can be sure that we're doing everything that can be done to mitigate the fire risk, which is of a big concern to us. That's my, oh, I do want to say one thing. There are, I know that there's been, just as a matter of course, that public notice was sent around to all property owners within three hundred, three hundred-foot radius. And I don't know, actually, who would be, who falls within that three hundred-foot radius, but we have spoken with the three homeowners or property owners or groups of property owners who are more immediately adjacent to the property, just to let them know what we're doing and to field their concerns if they've had any. And there have not been any concerns that have been expressed. One gentleman, Tim Terrell, who was notified by mail, has said that he fully supports the application. Another couple, Tom and Helen Subey, say that they fully support the application. And then the third couple who are affected are Jeff Klein, or Bob Klein and Jeff something, whose name I don't, whose last name I don't know. And they wanted to make sure that we weren't gonna do anything that would affect the parking area. That was their concern, and they asked to see a survey of the property that is at issue now. We sent them the survey and had a subsequent talk with them. No concerns there. So it's okay with our neighbors, and it's, I think that our neighbors also like it because of the fire mitigation issue.
Thank you. Does council have any questions of the applicant?
Well, one quick question. Did you, did they do the remediation? Was that, they came through and they?
The soil program?
Yeah.
They did.
They did, okay. Just was curious, 'cause I saw that and you mentioned it. I didn't know if they completed it. Okay.
That didn't, yeah. I guess what they, I'm just thinking back, they, it's very clear that they remediated part of it, but not the part where the giant reed is growing. Because, well, you know, it's, the giant reed is spreading really rapidly right now, and I guess that it's pretty strong and really invasive, and it's not being held back by whatever was put on top there. But yes, the remediation was done.
Okay, thank you. I believe there is a letter of support right in the packet here.
Yeah, I can read that really quickly. This is from Darren Tappan. Greetings. I'm writing in support of Steve Sugarman purchasing a portion of APN one oh three six three zero two six A to correct his lot line issues with the city. I live directly below Mr. Sugarman on Timby. He's a good neighbor and thoughtful steward of the town. Thank you, Darren Tappan, fifteen Timby Avenue.
Good. Anyone else wants to speak on this? Let the record show that Alicia Spiriti is with us. Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Someone make a motion. There's a suggested agenda.
If you go to this sheet right here, agenda item number one, and underneath that, you'll see a possible motion. That you would read, and that would, you would make the motion, and somebody would second it.
I will make the motion. I very first. I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to mayor and council that they move forward with the sale of a portion of property located at twenty-one A Timby Avenue, Bisbee, Arizona, approximately three thousand one hundred and two point nine oh square feet.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. I don't think there's roll call necessary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Carrie, thank you.
Who was the second?
Who was the what?
Thank you.
Tim Foster.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item two, review and discussion of the application for the transfer of city property submitted by John Rupi under City Code Section two point six point nine. The requested property is located adjacent to APN one oh one dash twelve dash zero eight two H, Bisbee, Arizona, on an unaddressed strip of land. The strip of land is approximately thirty feet. Staff, would you orient us on this?
One second here. Let me just grab that. Mr. Rup, are you still here? Mr. Rup? Where did he go? You're here. One sec. He was just here. He just disappeared. Huh, how odd. Um, one second. He dropped out of the call. I'm gonna try to see if I can get him again. Worst-case scenario, I can always call him on the phone. I'd like to get him because he just, somehow, he was just here, and then he, I don't know if he left or just got disconnected. Let me get his phone number real quickly. Oh, you do? Okay.
So can we have a quick discussion, just what he's doing there? I have a question.
Pardon?
Okay. I have a question, just for the committee.
He says that you're zooming.
Am I okay with asking you a question? Is this common?
Okay, got it.
Well, what we'll do is we'll call him instead. Surveys come out and property lines or?
In old Bisbee, it's very common.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, it's not, I think it's, my property's the same. It's not so uncommon in Warren either. Right. It's a common situation. Yeah. Like, my property line goes into the next house. Yeah.
I have a question as well. Is it proper to compliment him on all this amazing work that he's done and on, yeah?
Well, certainly.
Gotcha. Thank you.
It's interesting when people buy property and they don't get the real true information.
Yeah. I don't think I have it on mine.
Yeah. Me, my neighbors won't tell me.
Hi, sir.
Hi there. This is actually Emmanuel with the city of Bisbee.
Hi, Emmanuel.
Hi. So sorry about that Zoom meeting being garbled. I don't know why.
I couldn't understand anything that was said.
Okay, yeah, I think a phone would probably be better, just easier. It's hard to, I think the Zoom meeting, you're hearing all the echoes of the room. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read the staff report, okay? Are you ready, everybody? Okay. So, so this is for the request to purchase city-owned strip of land by Mr. John Rup. So Mr. Rup is requesting to purchase a narrow, steeply sloped strip of city-owned land, approximately thirty feet in width, located along the eastern border of his property in Warren. The land may have been intended as a right-of-way or a future alleyway. An appraisal completed on August seventh, two thousand and twenty-five provides an opinion of value of ten thousand four hundred dollars. Mr. Rup previously sought to purchase the same parcel in two thousand and nineteen when both the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council approved the sale. However, the public auction was held later without his notification, and no bids were received. The property was later considered for inclusion in a pool of potential building lots, though records indicate this transfer never occurred. Mr. Rup now seeks to complete the purchase to maintain the property and address fire hazards from overgrowth. So this, this subject property does not serve as a current planned open space, trail, or public access function under the city's adopted plans. Suitability for development under zoning regulations, this property's narrow width and steep slope render it unusable, unsuitable for independent development under current zoning and subdivision standards. Compatibility with surrounding uses, the proposed transfer would consolidate the strip with the applicant's existing residential parcel, maintaining the existing residential character and improving maintenance of the area. Burden or hardship, no burden or hardship is anticipated or found. The parcel is not required for access or public use. Suitability for public sale and auction. Given the property's limited development potential and adjacent to a single property owner, the parcel is suitable for auction. So for subsection E, this property is not marketable to the general public because no one other than the adjoining property owner can, within the zoning code, lawfully utilize the property. And at the moment, there is no adjoining property owner who desires to purchase the property. So that's the staff report.
Does the applicant wish to make any further statement?
Would you like to make any further statements, Mr. Rup?
I don't have any further statements. I think you've covered it.
Okay.
We do have a neighbor present. Come to the podium and identify yourself.
So my name is Sandy Tilcock. I live at three oh nine Black Knob View, and we are the people who sold him the current parcel of property he owns. It was next door to us when we bought our property. We had an acre. So he bought that. And since John lives in Portland, I help maintain and am responsible for maintaining that, his vacant property now. I have it, the grass cut twice a year, spend a lot of money doing that, et cetera. But we always were stopped at this post, which somebody told us, you don't go any further than that, which was this thirty strip, thirty feet. And finally, we inquired and found out what it was. A couple of years ago, with the fire danger and the fact that you had grasses almost eight feet high and people were throwing trash in it, I didn't want to spend the money having somebody come in and maintain that for you to start with. So I got in touch with Logan, and he came out and said, you're right, we do own that property. We didn't know that. Nobody knew, really, that you owned the property. So they did the first cut-down, and our agreement was that we would maintain it thereafter. So we have been maintaining the property without owning it, hiring people to cut the grass, et cetera, and stuff like that. It, you know, it has no value other than joining John's piece of property, enhancing that, making a little bit of more available and stuff like that. And I feel like we have been maintaining it and taking care of it. And so I support the transfer of the property, his purchase of the property. Obviously, he's a friend, but it drove me crazy to have that grass and that trash, and we had tons of trash. They took out truckloads of trash as well as grass and stuff because people were just throwing things in it all the time. It was just vacant, you know, nobody knew what it was. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Council have any questions? No. Are we ready for a motion?
A motion, a motion to move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the mayor and council that they move forward with the sale of the strip of city property located adjacent to APN one oh one dash one two dash zero eight two H, Bisbee, Arizona, approximately thirty feet.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. All, just, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous.
Okay, your motion passed.
And both of these cases will go before the city council. And the one, this will be an auction for this piece here. The other is already will be a standard price, so.
Right.
And I will, although John won't be here for the auction, but I will hold a little bit of responsibility and check.
Good, thank you.
All right. Thank you guys very much.
Have a good night.
Did we miss something? Did you want to speak on an issue, or?
No, I'm just.
Okay, great. Okay, agenda item three, update on the general plan.
Well, everybody, now we're back to more typical planning and zoning subjects, topics. I'm gonna give you kind of an update. The last time I gave you an update, it's been a while, I think. So I've had to put the general plan, you know, so many other things have been happening that I really had to push the general plan, the work I've been doing on it, back considerably, a lot more than I wanted to. A lot of things kept on, really, a lot of tasks kept on coming my way. So finally, been working on it in earnest for the last month or so, really going through the documents, going through the feedback that you have given me. What I'm doing right now is, so just kind of a rundown of what I've done so far. I am working on a parks and recreation element. Currently, the plan has a land use and circulation element, and that's what's required for a town our size by the state of Arizona. But I'm opting to really, I think there's a lot of missed opportunities for the city to really work on expanding their planning, their, sorry, their general plan to include sections on arts and culture, which I've been working with some local organizations, on kind of coming up with some ideas and some policy goals. Community well-being, that includes public health, parks and recreation, open space, environment, and historic preservation. So I've been, I've been creating some of these sort of rough drafts, and I've been filling them in. And if anybody feels compelled to, I can send them any of these sections, and they can take a peek at them. They're only a couple of pages long. Now, remember when I first started this process, you all were, I gave you like a spreadsheet that must have been like, I don't know how many pages, like a hundred pages, overwhelming, right? There's a lot of stuff in that plan. So each of these sections are only a couple of pages long because I'm trying to, you know, get some well-targeted ideas, policy goals in the plan instead of just kind of throwing the kitchen sink in with everything, right? So what I, also what I'm working on is there is a second section of the plan called the current conditions. It's essentially a current conditions report. It essentially gives you all the data, traffic data, population data, population expectations, you know, income, property rate, parks. Everything is essentially a community profile for the city of Bisbee. So it's really something where you look at it and you say, this is where we are. This is our strengths, our weaknesses. And so I'm updating all of that data. I'm digging deep into, you know, website, census data, economic data, CGO, the council government, they have a lot of data, traffic data. So I'm really updating all of, you know, to reflect the latest numbers and trends because the last one is from two thousand and fifteen. So getting a better understanding of our community, where we are in the grand scheme of things. I created a survey, an online survey, and I, I put it, I actually posted it up, but I need to actually be a little bit more, I need to put it out a bit more, a little bit more proactive with sharing it with the community. I've only gotten like thirty responses so far. So what I'm doing is I'm probably gonna find some spots to put it out. And then also, I need to update the city webpage for the plan. I haven't updated it in quite some time. And what I'm gonna do, though, is I'm gonna get a solid, rough draft together of the whole plan, and I'm gonna run it by you all. And in order to get it adopted, what I'm gonna do is we're gonna have a public hearing with Planning and Zoning, and we're gonna have a public hearing with the mayor and council to adopt it. But first, I'm gonna have a public hearing with you all. So we could basically have, you know, have community members come in if they'd like and speak on it. And, um, also, I've been speaking with a lot of stakeholders, so I've been working on these sections, I'm gonna share with stakeholders. I had a steering committee meeting and we had a lot of people from the community, we had people from the, from Freeport. Uh, we had people from the school board, from this, uh, from Cochise County, from, uh, some local organizations. So, um, yeah, I've been reaching out and talking to a lot of people. And, uh, essentially, this is where we are right now. Now, I'm not quite sure what the timeline is going to be for this, but I think that we can expect in the early part of twenty twenty-six to have the public hearing and the, the, the process where the council will vote on it. What I need to do is get the rest of the information collected. Then I'm gonna have to format it into a document, probably using, um, I don't know, a type of like desktop publishing. I know Lisa, you had a, you had mentioned using, um, Canva. I still explore that option, not my favorite idea, but, yeah, it works.
You need a review or graphics?
Yes.
I'm happy to help.
Okay, really, I will definitely reach out to you. I mean, so.
Understanding the timeline, so I thought there was a, a legal requirement for twenty twenty-five to be.
Yeah, I, I, um.
I'm gonna consult council for.
I should ca- I should consult them, but, but, um, yeah, I, you know, I d- definitely need to check, but I, I don't know if, if the, how hard and fast those rules are. I mean, it's a twenty twenty-five plan, but getting it adopted would be, you know, uh, early twenty-six, I think should get it under the line, but I will check. See what happens.
Earl- early twenty-six can mean a lot of different things.
Yes. Well, I'm hoping for January.
For six months, you know.
Oh, yeah, it's true.
Yeah. Early twenty-six, uh, would, for me, would imply maybe January, February.
I mean, that's, that's the goal, I mean, I, I think that over time we can, I just, uh, you know, so. That's, uh, my update.
Want to answer questions, that's staff?
Yeah.
The parks and recreation piece of this puzzle.
Uh huh.
Is that, is that, that's a piece of the one that you have?
Piece of the one I have?
Yeah, it's part of the general plan, it's part of the general plan.
Yep, yep.
I'm trying to think parks, we really have just the one big park. Which is Vista. And what I'm trying to ascertain is we have, the age, the median age in, in Bisbee is, is fifty-something years old.
Sixty-one.
See, uh, there you go. So the, but, we have, we do have quite a population of younger, uh, adults.
Look.
And I wanted to understand if anyone has proposed that the north piece of the, of the south Vista be maintained as a, uh, soccer field. If that's in there or if anyone has looked at it, uh, we ha- they're playing there now. You know, much to their, you know, play it on risk, um.
I played there before, soccer.
Right. So I was just thinking that, uh, I'd like to see if that was in the plan or if people had looked into that to make, see if we can make it just a little bit more, uh, user-friendly.
That, that section of the park, so you're saying specifically something on the lines of maybe leveling the field, seeding grass, making it so it's.
See, because it's already has, it already has, um, you know, the water is already there. The irrigation is already in place. So it's really just a matter of leveling, making sure the rocks are out and that kind of thing.
Okay, yeah, I know, actually, that was a conversation I was having with Logan. You know, people want a soccer field, it's been brought up several times.
I've lived in many communities where we've forgotten about the young people.
Yeah.
Like Midland, Odessa, Texas and some other places. And those places have a tremendous problem with young folks that don't have anything to do. So that's all I'm saying, it's just one more thing.
Yeah.
That it requires very little maintenance.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely, I think that having a soccer field would be great. I mean, I, you know, part of it is really leveraging our existing resources, right? That's why we do the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats kind of analysis, um, because I'm really wanting to find a way to, to use our current resources to sort of springboard to a higher level of, you know, what we can accomplish, what we can achieve. Whether we can get more grants, this document can be used to get more grants. And also to sort of direct us as a community to say, hey, there's younger people here, I know that there's, uh, the median age is much older than the rest of Arizona and the country. But we want to make sure that we're, you know, prioritizing making the city a better place for everybody, not just people that are, you know, sixty-one or the median age, you know, so. You know, so essentially, that's, that's why I've included all those other sections of the, of the plan, because I do think that, that we want to really start thinking about how we can work together as a community, just for everybody.
Yeah, and, and because it's non-exclusionary, because there's always events there, July fourth, there's, you know, the buzzard festivals and different things that they have going on there. But at least if it was just maintained as a field.
Yeah.
We would be multi-use.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I don't have a copy of the hundred-page document, I don't know that I need it. But you also mentioned these other things that you're working on, that they might be available to look at.
Yeah, and I can send you the, you know, I, I have, um, drafts of, of these other elements or sections of the plan.
I would love to see those.
Okay, yeah, I will do that, and, you know, I'm still working on some and a lot of it is very unfinished and very, you know, I would say, um, pretty much like a boilerplate, just skeleton of a plan and, you know, and the thing is, i- is like, you know, we, we, I, you know, I, I don't have, um, the resources to, to do a really deep dive into each of these sections. But, you know, I'm adding them to, as a sort of a springboard, so I can send you some of this information as, as they're coming together and I'm kind of getting them edited and having conversations with community members, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
So also make comment about, you shared with me earlier, the importance of water or fire wise.
Well, th- that was, uh, I, I worry about people staying on public property, that they're not maintaining or looking after in any way. I don't know if that's part of this plan, having some kind of plan around. I know Javier talked last time about the possibility of bringing up the subject.
Or camping?
Yeah, you know, people staying on public property in general. Um, I know it veers off into homelessness and stuff like that, but I, I'm just wondering if we, if part of our plan, the new one, includes people living.
Unhoused.
Unhoused.
Unhoused, okay, right, so, and you're mostly con- concerned in the context of fires?
Yes.
Potentially happening, okay.
Because most of the fires are started that way.
Oh, okay, um, I have not addressed that particular issue, there is a, um, we recently are, are in the, well, actually, right now, we're in the process of adopting a emergency plan, uh, let me look it up real quick. And, uh, let's see here. And, yeah, um, this is CWPP, that's right. So, this essentially is a.
Oh, right, I've seen the new CWPP.
Yeah, so, that's, that's a, you know, the sort of a plan that could address that issue. But mainly, you know, this issues with fire and safety and community safety, so.
But it's not part of the new plan?
The general plan.
Working on the general plan.
Yeah, I mean, the thing with the general plan is, I don't, I wouldn't, you, so it's a policy document that's really kind of gently guiding policy, you know, in, in a direction where we're like saying, this is what we want to explore, this is what we want to do. Um, and, and I don't really, you know, we could have, uh, you know, a policy regarding, you know, helping people, uh, making it an effort to help people find a place to live. But, you know, that's, that's something I'd have to explore, you know.
I wonder if there's a setting aside of a particular place where it would be, because when they're tucked away and you don't know they're there until the fire starts, then that's, and I know there's Safeway area. And I don't know that anybody would want to go to an official area, but, you know, I mean, it's, I know it's a naughty problem, the whole thing. But, I just thought I'd mention it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, I mean, it's something worth addressing and I, I think that the, the general plan, I don't know, you know, we may have to come up with another strategy. You know, and really think deeply about it. I think the general plan is really covering a very broad, community-wide.
Right.
Element, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
On that, so the plan, I look at it as its goals. It's what we want to do, these are our goals for the next ten year. How we'll get there is by adopting an emergency management plan. So like those level of details, it's like, we want to do these things, how do we do it? And then that gets solidified through those ten years. And then at the end of the ten years, we look at it and say, hey, we met our goal because we adopted and implemented this plan. Versus putting all the, the details.
Right.
So that, that being said, so if it's the fire, uh, chief would be responsible for putting together a response plan, right? To fire, uh, if you have a fire, regardless of where it comes from. Whether it's a dry strike, whether it's an intentional fire, which are two big things as well. And then you have, you know, you could have the homeless thing, which again goes back to intentional, I guess. But it's, it would be regardless of that, if a fire started, how do we respond? Like when we had the, you know, the buildings go on fire downtown and we had to bring everybody and their brother in to fight those fires. Or when the fires happen on the side of the mountain, I think that maybe that's it, we just need to understand, you know, what is your fire strategy?
Yeah. We have it, you know, and I think it's.
If we can monitor homeless people is what I'm trying to get at.
Okay.
It would be hard.
A part of the, you know, I've, I've looked at the, um, the CWPP and, um, you know, I, I don't know, but if it addresses that section, that element, that issue.
Maybe it doesn't, I don't know.
But I mean, I would say, you know, that's, that's gonna go up on the city website at some point, some point, pretty soon, I'm sure, after it's adopted. So, I think that, uh, yeah, wildfire, community wildfire protection plan. Have it here, but, anyway, so, I don't know exactly just yet, but that's something that's worth having a conversation about, I think, in the future. Try to address that issue.
Further comments or questions?
I have one quick question, you, you had mentioned early on that you had gotten some public response. Is there any other future interest in reaching out to the public in different ways to get feedback, I mean, like, having public meetings or?
So we've actually had quite a few public outreach meetings and events. So I actually had a kickoff meeting at the Copper Queen Library back in twenty twenty-four. And, uh, w- we actually had a table at a couple of different events, we had the, a table at the Pi and Sky Event a couple of times in San Jose at the Bisbee Science Lab. We, um, actually set up a table at the, at a pedal, at a, sorry, Bicycle Pedal Power Festival, and we also, uh, set up at the lib- at, at the Ice Cream Social at the library annex, and we've also set up at the, uh, Chunk or Treats event.
Good.
So we've, we've done quite a bit, bit of outreach, um, and made our faces, you know, seen in the community, uh, so.
When you, when you set it up, what exact, what do you mean, you set, set up what?
We had a, we have a table and we have, um, some, some, um, easels and some poster boards and we have, we have, um, stick-it post-it notes and we have people write their thoughts about certain subjects in the ci- in the city, for example. You know, you can say, what do you, what do you feel about parks and recreation in the city, what would you like to see more of? How do you feel about in the part of town you live in, how about the streets or housing or community events, what the ci- what the city's doing, so you're really getting a lot of people really sharing their, their opinions in really a free form and fun sort of way, you know?
Since you do also online surveys.
I, I did an online survey, yes, that people can, and I need to actually re, uh, I need to go and put that out again and see if I can just capture some more responses to that.
Do you have any metrics on responses? And like surveys collected feedback, what was important topic-wise to the community when? Like, yeah, I'm assuming you have like a bunch of documents somewhere.
I do, I have a whole.
Can you compile them to like metrics as far as?
Yes, we're gonna compile all those documents, metrics, basically, you know, basically, um, organizing them by subject, you know, and then, and then when I have the survey, I've, I've used this software called Esri, it's like GISd software, which essentially I think would probably do the, do the sorting for you. And if not, then I can probably figure it out.
And is that a shared, I know at the beginning you, you had a shared drive.
Yeah.
Is that still, is all the information captured in there or?
Yeah. We have a lot of information that's captured, I, I pretty much entered all of the, the post-it notes on, into the spreadsheets. So, it's all collected digitally.
I'm just realizing we have three new members since we started this.
Yeah, I know it's.
So my members sharing, distributing, I mean, I know we're, we're up against the deadline, but.
Yeah.
Proofreading, all that stuff.
Super, yeah.
I don't know if we can distribute Logan, Tom.
That'd be, I mean, I, I, I would appreciate it, you know, I have a, a kind of a group in the, in, you know, the city that I work with. And I'm, and I'm telling them to, I'm telling them to tell me to stay on task. I mean, you know, I'm very, yeah, and you, you know, it's like I, you know, part of it is I'm doing a lot of this stuff by myself and I would usually use a team, you know, and I, I don't, I'm not a hundred percent keen on the whole idea of managing this project by myself, because I think that I need, you know, it's, it's nice to have, you know, people and feedback, and I get fe- feedback from other people too, but, you know. So it's good, but if you guys wanted to, I know that the last time I, I, maybe I gave you all too much information at one time, which I think is something I tend to do a lot, but, uh.
I think we had some really great productive working sessions.
Oh, we absolutely did, yes.
Some great conversations, so it's just a matter of seeing those notes captured.
Yeah.
Now it's redlining corporation time and.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and what I'm doing too is I'm, you know, I'm trying to find the balance between what you all have said to me in those meetings and what the community has said to me over, over time, and also what stakeholders have said to me, you know, people that in, in the community, people in the community, people also like, that, um, you know, people from FMI and people from, you know, the school, you know, Bisbee School District and people from Cochise County, because what we're doing is I'm taking all the information and I'm gonna create these rough drafts, right? And I'm gonna have you all take a look at it too. And just, you know, because I think that ultimately it's gonna be, a lot of what you, everybody has said that they wanted. And, you know, we'll exclude things like a zip line over the pit or whatever, things people suggest, because that does, you get those responses, you know? But I mean. But, I'm sorry, I mean, if anybody here was really pro str- uh, zip line, but I'm afraid that that's just not a realistic, uh, goal. But, anyway, so, yeah, just going in at it, you know, we'll see what happens, and then the council will vote on it, and then once, well, you could recommend it, and then the council will vote on it, and then it's our new general plan. Bring us into the twenty-first century. Mid, early mid-twenty-first century.
We're looking forward to this.
Okay.
Great.
Are you, are you guys all cloud drive savvy? Or like a hard copy?
What do you mean by clouds out here? Tim's got a twelve-year-old neighbor who could.
I'm just.
I can get on the club.
What's that?
I said your local favorite digital consultant.
Yeah, right.
I'm just trying to figure out with the, all the stuff that you've done, I know we have digital copies, it's like, did, do we need to print that out again?
So, so what, this is what I'm doing right now, is I have, I have, you know, I had stuff on a, on a Google, I, the original document I gave you was on Google Sheets or something, I think. Google Docs and, um, but, but I haven't been using that, I've actually been using, um, Microsoft Teams and, um, SharePoint, right? And, and I don't know. And, and I don't know if I can share with anybody outside of the city, those, that, those documents. I mean, I could ask the IT person if I could, but we can try it and see what happens.
Are, are we outside the city?
Yeah, wouldn't we?
Well, I, I, what, no, what I mean is, uh, an, an email address outside of this, not a bisbeaz dot gov, you know, email extension, right, whatever, so.
If you are permitted, I'm more than happy to assist you off digital.
Yeah.
Very well versed in SharePoint, Google, all the tech.
So, here's the deal.
How are these TVs working, so we have some?
Yeah, we can look at them, I mean.
We'd love that.
I, I would love it too, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't print anything, let's do it all digitally.
Let's go, I'll print a environmental plan, save trees.
Save trees, but one question I have is this, so, this has been an issue I've been, I've been dealing with, so I was gonna, I was gonna use, uh, Adobe InDesign to make the document, but a couple of problems with that, one is that if I make, if I use that program, and then if I'm not here, and you guys need to amend the pan, the plan sometime within, between now and ten years from now, I don't know if there would be anybody, if the city would either have Adobe, uh, InDesign, or if, if anybody that works here would know how to use it. Next question, I was gonna use Microsoft Publisher, because we do have that, Microsoft Publisher is going away, you know? They're gonna discontinue it after next year, so then I was like, what can I do? Because I need to make it ADA compliant, so that if anybody is visually impaired, they can basically get the, you know, have act, have the accessibility element, so that they're not being like, oh, it's just a, you know, so, I don't know.
The problem is software fees and licensing, and then if you have some kind of city firewall, then you use like a Blue Beam, where other people get, yeah, they get passwords external to the Blue Beam account, that you're putting documents in a folder. So it becomes an intermediary, you're not allowing anyone to get past the firewall into protected documents, you're actually posting those documents
Yeah, well.
outside the firewall for people to access, free range, as you were, depending on how you look at it. But, again, there's software licensing issues, and so you'd have to find some freeware thing, if you didn't want to have to go through that.
Yeah, I could use Scribus, Scribus, whatever, it's a, it's an open source. Again, you know, maybe I could use that, I don't know, but. Yeah, those are the challenges I'm facing right now, is when I have to go and finally format the document for public, for the public, to post on the city website. So, you know, I want to make it pretty, or at least just, you know, make sense.
Anything further here?
Nope.
Guess we got one more agenda item for, update on the Bisbee Shade Tree Master Plan?
Yeah, okay, well, so, we, um, and I guess I have to remember the last time that I talked about that with you all, so, this is, this is what was happening at the moment with the Shade Tree Master Plan, uh, Josh White for the Parks Department, he's actually just starting an arborist training program, so we're, the city, once that's done, the city will have a certified arborist. Uh, we have a draft of our Bisbee Municipal Tree Ordinance, uh, that we've worked on together with Tom Ellis, and then we have a tree map that identifies all the trees on city property. Um, and then, so, we're, we're, we haven't adopted the Tree City Ordinance yet. But let me give you a, a brief description of the ordinance, uh, so it establishes the city of Bisbee's, uh, framework for protect, protecting planting and maintaining trees on public property in the city of Bisbee, um, so it delegates authority to the Public Works Director to manage the public trees, but essentially, what we're gonna really have is a five-member tree advisory board, and they're gonna support planning, public education, they're gonna organize Arbor Day event, they're gonna, um, make a list of species recommendations, uh, and other tree city requirements. I believe that we could actually have the Parks Committee, um, essentially be responsible. The, the Parks, the Parks Committee could be the pi, the five-member tree advisory board. The Parks Committee actually already did, um, create a list of tr, recommended trees to plant in the city, in the parks. So they're kind of ahead of us already, which is great. So, um, what we're gonna do is that we're going to, in April, Arbor Day happens, we're gonna have a Tree City Proclamation that I think the mayor can essentially do the proclamation, and then you're going to have a vote with council to adopt the Tree City USA, uh, to, to adopt the, um, the ordinance for the, you know, essentially with this, I'm describing here. So, we, I think we want to do that all around the same time, around Arbor Day, you know, have, have a planting ceremony, adopt our ordinance, have a Tree City Proclamation, and then, um, so I think that we're gonna just do that all in April, it seems to make sense. Once there's a lot of, you know, energy around it, we can have the tree planting, I think it all would work well together. We could adopt it now, or I could bring it, you know, write a council action forum and have council adopt it now, but I thought it might be okay to wait. What do you think?
Well, I was just curious, we had the earlier program, the gentleman came down from wherever.
Yep.
Made a presentation at the library, and then I haven't really heard anything more since.
Yeah.
I was raised the question.
So, part of it was, you know, he came down to kind of explain it to everybody, and then we had the tree planting, you know, last April. Which, were you there, you were there, right?
The one tree, you mean?
Yep, the big, the big tree.
I shoveled in some dirt, yes.
You did, you shoveled in some dirt, okay, good, yes. I knew you were a part of it, but, but, um, so, yeah, so that was part of the process, you know, and now that we've got the tree planted, and we have, we were, we were mostly just writing, working on writing the ordinance over the summer, um, and we could, we could adopt it right now, but also I thought it'd be good to have it all happen at the same time.
When is the gentleman supposed to be done with his training?
Uh, it's gonna take, I, I mean, I actually do not know how long the timeline is, but he's going to be going to Phoenix once a week for the next couple of months. So, we're talking like a handful of months, I think, like day-long trainings for, to be an arborist. So, it's, it should be sometime within the next year, maybe even by spring.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Is there any reason not to adopt it now?
No, there's no reason, we could adopt it now.
Doesn't that take it off your list?
Well, yes, it does. I don't know, I mean, again, I was given the, the, the choice to either adopt it now or adopt it while we're planting a tree.
It's more of a ceremonial thing if we pulled off till Arbor Day?
That's what I was thinking, that, that's not necessarily, I mean, we could be like, all right, let's do it right now, get the trees planted, but I figured that when we have an arborist, we have the tree planting ceremony, we have a proclamation, it might be good timing.
Well, that's a good reason.
What would be nice between now and Arbor Day ceremony
Mm-hmm.
is to go around and take down all the dead trees on public property, on, on city property. Start with that, let's take the dead ones down on city property.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
May I ask you a question regarding that, what about dead trees on private property?
Well, we, we have other ways to address that.
Yes.
That's harder, though.
Right, but, you know, if you go back to your fire question.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's other things, we've been working on some things like, uh, uh, toughening up our, our, uh, codes regarding lots getting out of control
Mm-hmm.
of abandoned houses, becoming safety hazards and things like that.
Also with your arborist thing, I was, the reason I asked about the gentleman's training, because if he's gonna be at, the guy, the, the person that is going to be saying, okay, we're gonna put this kind of tree in this section, or this kind of tree in that section, you know, I'd prefer it be somebody who knew what the, they were doing.
Yep.
You know, like, these are a water seeker, these aren't good for, you know, being planted near our sewage systems, these aren't good for, you know, somebody who knew what they were doing, I don't know what I'm doing, I just plant trees in the nearest hole.
Right.
But we need somebody who actually knows those things, you know, um, so that would be, that would be nice.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and, and the person who, Josh, who is, um, doing the training, has a, a knowledge of the trees and what works, but also, um, plants trees in the parks right now, and, but also we have the Parks Committee, they have a, a, a knowledge of trees, and we also have, um, organizations like, uh, Project Wildlife here in Bisbee, they have a lot of knowledge. So, you're, you're, you've got a lot of people here in Bisbee, I'd say that we are, if, we may not be rich in a lot of things, but we're rich in people who know what kind of trees to plant and where to plant them.
Good deal.
So.
Do you have further reports in terms of previous actions that we've taken here, the recommendations of the council?
Um, yeah, so, we actually did, um, the council approved the sale of the Eli Hill property that you had listened, had before you, uh, regarding the property that was adjacent to his up, up the road on Opera. Also, the council approved the wine tasting room permit, did I report that back to you yet, no? Okay, they approved it, so, they were, they were, they were happy to do it.
Great, further comments from staff?
Let me look at my agenda and see if I have anything else. Um, and nope, that's it, actually, wait a second here. Nope, that's everything.
Hey Doug, can I?
Commission comments at this point, Tim?
I, can I go back to an agenda item, the, the one on the general plan, I just had a curiosity, it's a ten-year plan, correct?
Yep.
So does it start from ten years from when it's adopted?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because you have a, a year twenty twenty-five on the plan, but it's not gonna get adopted until twenty twenty-six. So is it ten years from twenty twenty-six?
Good question.
That's the timeline thing.
That's a timeline.
But it's, we, it's listed as a twenty twenty-five general plan, right? But it's not gonna get adopted until twenty twenty-six, so I'm just curious, is the ten years starting when it's adopted, or is it starting in twenty twenty-five while it's being developed?
We need to have our, our attorney, Joe Estes, weigh in on.
I need to talk to Mr. Estes.
Sorry, I just, it came to me after we moved on, so I just, it was a question.
Further commission comments, future agenda items?
I have a future agenda item, but it's, it's been brought here before, um, I believe Mike brought it regarding the speeding on Tombstone Canyon. Um, I had a visitor, and it occurred to me that, you know, we were talking about potential speed bumps, which opened our conversation, but it, it, it occurred to me that there's not really s, s, speed signs, there's only one, it could be in the other canyon, and it's hidden.
Huh.
So I think maybe just posting some signs where they're visible, whether, whether, whether the, you know, kids who speak will follow them or not, but at least it'll be posted and, and portable, just an observation from the out-of-town visitor.
I know this.
How fast to go in the canyon.
Well, the city does have that portable speed sign, they, they put around at, at response to requests, I see about town, so I'm sure that's something is you can request.
So, you're requesting a, a agenda item on speed limits on Tombstone Canyon, or?
Additional signage.
Method of slowing down traffic?
I don't know if, is there an R review or not, but recommendation for review of, I guess that would be Streets Committee?
That's you all know.
Oh, okay, then, yeah.
It used to be a separate thing, but.
Because there's a sign going north that says twenty-five, and there's a sign going south by Bisbee Bug, or a little pass there that says fifteen.
It changes there, it's twenty-five above that.
Is that what they're confused about?
I just think the, the visibility of it and knowing what to go on that canyon is not obvious to an individual who does not live in Bisbee, right? Which, and that's our, our large population, the tourism speeding on the weekends.
Speed limits, um, okay, uh, traffic, what, between what street and what street are you mostly concerned about?
The canyon, Tombstone Canyon.
Tombstone Canyon.
Whole thing.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, except the speed limit changes, but.
Well, when you're in west, West Boulevard, and then when it comes down and around by Mile High, like, up there, it's, they've got, they're supposed to put the speed bumps.
Oh, well, yeah, but.
And it's slower there, and then it comes around.
And it's posted twenty-five, and then down by High Desert, it's posted fifteen.
In the, in the cross area?
Yeah.
Yeah, where you go around the corner to go into the busy.
But there could be more signs.
Yeah, I, I don't even know where they're going, I just go through.
I live on Tombstone, so I.
And it's interesting, why do, why do they select that, why does it go from twenty-five to fifteen, why is it not fif- fifteen?
You come into town.
Is it because of the concentration of people?
Just a recommendation, not a discussion, um, so we'll table it.
Some people have.
Yeah.
For further conversation.
Good question.
Okay.
Further suggestions for agenda items?
I have, I have one additional, um, I guess with, for streets now, I don't know graffiti falls in that, um, but there's been, there's quite a bit um, on the canyon, on various walls, uh, maybe this ties into the art piece of the plan, or some kind of, I don't know, put a piece of art there. There might be respect and not the, the, the local kids, I'm assuming, based on the, the graphics, but, um, just some opportunities for improvements on cleanup there, represent our town, you know.
Graffiti. I, I don't think graffiti fits under art, the art plan.
Well, if you put a piece of art there, right, it doesn't need an art wall, like.
A mural.
Well.
I don't know how the city manages every time there's graffiti, if somebody just goes paint, or if any random person, if there's a volunteer committee, that's like, let's go paint the graffiti today, like, I don't know.
No, they just have, they probably just have the, the maintenance crew go and cover.
Slap a coat of paint on.
Slap it. Okay.
In certain sections of town, the next day it's back.
Uh-huh, okay, got it, we could talk about that.
But we have had some serious discussions about the different things graffiti and art
Mm-hmm.
in past years.
And that, that conversation continues on, uh, social media. What I might consider to be graffiti, somebody else considers it to be new age art, whatever.
Hell.
It's, it shouldn't be, but it's kind of a tough issue.
Now, it'd be kind of interesting if we, if we had somebody put up graffiti, and we found them, and then we brought them before the DRB, said, uh, does your, does your art fit historic care, I don't know, I'm just.
Well, okay, graffiti and vandalism.
Vandalism.
Let's say graffiti is three-dimensional lettering.
I have one point, I will not be present for our next scheduled meeting, which is December eighteenth, and I don't know whether we want, uh.
Well, excuse Doug Dunn.
What, and so just, if you do have business for that meeting, well, please check with members to make sure we got a forum.
Now, yes, we'll see, we'll see what, what happens, if, if anybody wants to be here on December eighteenth, how do you all feel?
I will not be here.
You won't, you won't be here, but.
You can check with her.
Okay, does anybody else have an idea that they may be, or may not be here on December eighteenth? Because we can always cancel it.
I would be here.
Okay.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
Okay.
Good, well, I think you're gonna have a forum, okay, anything else?
That's everything.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.